All right, welcome, ladies and gentlemen. A call to order, the March 27th Business Meeting of the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners. Mr. Crupp, our county administrator, will do the rule call.
Good morning, Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Hello. Here, and would all please rise with me and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, sovereign, with liberty and justice for all.
Almost perfect.
Yeah, almost perfect.
Well, this agenda today is what I affectionately call a vanilla agenda. There's not much happening with the board here in these meetings today, which doesn't mean we don't have a lot going on. We have our retreat coming up, strategic planning retreat, and some of that will be announced here later on. But it is time for citizens' communication, and we have several cards. Barbara Kemper and Brian Johnson, sitting together. Now, I'd like to announce the arrival of Commissioner Martha Schrader, coming into the room.
Should be played. How are you, Jim?
Oh, my God.
Love you, Trudy. Okay.
I better get a hug, too, you know. Anyway, your three minutes hasn't started while we're messing around up here, but now either one of you can start.
Okay, I'll start. I'm Barbara Kemper. Thank you, commissioners, or good morning, and thank you for opportunity to speak. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the Clackamas River. For 20 years, I've been involved in issues involving the Clackamas River and the quality of the water that we get from it. And I had this all memorized, so here we go. Anyhow, the Clackamas is a 303D listed river under the Clean Water Act, which means it's water quality impaired and it deserves special considerations. It's the source of drinking water for probably most people here, for the cities of West Lynn and Oregon City, Gladstone, Lake Oswego, Tygerd, Happy Valley, and a large unincorporated area. We mutually drink water, and most of it comes from the lower three miles of the Clackamas River that has four intakes for four treatment plants on it. Just above that three-mile first intake is a site that I've spoken to you about before, and that's the old Clackamas River sand and gravel site that the county has now purchased and is working on as an industrial park area for high-quality industrial development. And you've assured me in the past that that's what you're going to insist on for there, is high-quality industrial development. Okay, well, you know that directly adjacent to that on the downstream end is the Clackamas composting site. Problems with that, problems that I've called the attention of the commissioners, but even after sending pictures of the violations there on-site, I've not heard back, so I don't know if you've done any further investigation there. However, now, we have become aware, the CPO has received notice, and I'm not speaking on behalf of CPO, they've received notice of a design review for what I think, if we're going to be honest about it, is a sewage treatment facility. It's for treatment of the waste collected by septic tank cleaners, septic pumping, and these wastes are currently taken to a place in Boring where they are then transferred to trucks of some sort and then taken up to the dowels or someplace like that and disposed of there. But now they want to do this on a site across the street from where the Clackamas composting site is.
Oh, across the street.
And anyhow, I think this is something that must be monitored very, very closely because of the potential problems with it. I was on the North Bank Committee, which was sponsored by the Board of County Commissioners about 20 years ago, and from that there came several recommendations that were incorporated and changes to the ZDOs at that time. And I'm not so sure, but some of those have become pretty watered down since then. I do believe that the sources of our drinking water, particularly with these particular potentially badly polluting situations, needs to be defended, and that's what I'm trying to do. Thank you.
Commissioner Bernard.
So, as far as the composting facility, so that was you who sent me those pictures quite a while ago. We have a very limited lease time left on that facility. Our goal is to move, I mean, to develop that site and for them to leave. So, the lease agreement's very limited, and we also have been watching the site to make sure that they're not breaking the rules, and DEQ's been out there also looking. I hadn't heard about the, and I think we should look into that, that sewage processing, it must be a private business.
Is it a private business?
I haven't heard a thing about.
No, I haven't either.
The application came to us as a design review. There was never a conditional use permit, and I think it's a pretty loose interpretation of the rules to consider the particular use they're considering to be a non-conditional use, I mean, to be an out-and-out use.
We're going on this, and Commissioner Savis would like to say something.
So, yeah, just, you know, I'll check with the administrator as far as the previous concerns about Clackamas composting. I assume that there was some follow-up on that, so we'll look into that and...
I did send pictures of violations.
Right, but I do know that, I'll look into this other application, but I do know that there's more, you cannot discharge any wastewater, period, in the Clackamas River.
Not directly discharged.
Or not even at all in the Clackamas, yeah, so on the Clackamas, so I understand that, and I'll look into what the application is and the activity, but rest assured that they'll have to meet DEQ standards, whatever it is, and I know that they can't discharge in the Clackamas, period, for wastewater.
Thank you.
Two things. One, as was stated, S&amp;H Logging, who does the composting there, is on a one-year lease.
Excuse me, I'm not catching.
S&amp;H is on a one-year lease on that site, with cancelable rights. So, we have had some great interest in our Caps Road property, our shovel-ready site in Clackamas County, and as part of that, this is additional property, and, you know, our goal is to work with them, and Jim Bernard has worked a great deal in the legislature and all of us have about, if not here, where, for composting, you know? And certainly, unfortunately, this has to be a legislative fix, not something we can do on our own. But anyway, they are short-term. Now, getting back to the containerize, we're talking about the transfer of septic tank waste. I cannot even envision how that could get into the Clackamas River. I mean, if they're talking about, and they are, huge containers full of this stuff, unless one of them had a huge rupture, which would be pretty unlikely, I don't see how that could touch that river at all, Barbara, do you?
Pumps fail all the time.
Pumps? The pump fails, it stops pumping from one container to the other.
Pumping from tanks, from trucks.
Does that mean it's going to go on the ground? Is that what you're saying?
Pardon?
Does that mean it will go on the ground when the pump fails?
It might.
Okay. Well, you know, we'll leave it to the staff and their recommendations on this, but I think the staff is particularly cognizant of the fact that no droppings of that kind should go into the river, even by leaching. But the two, again, is that they're on a short leash, S&amp;H, because we have other uses for that property, higher and better uses. And second of all, certainly the staff, or you, and possible hearings officer for conditional use, will pay great detail to what might go wrong with the site to cause any kind of a problem with Clackamas River. All right, so we'll follow up on that. Mr. Johnson, isn't it?
Yeah, Brian Johnson, Gladstone. I was here last year and told you to fire Mr. Coonsy. I think you'll remember that.
It's not within our realm of possibility, but he doesn't work for us.
That's right. So, in reading the 31-page document, which I assume you have all read, have you all read the...
Yes.
So, I assume, too, then, there would be a couple other people that would be possibly looking for the door. So, my next thing here is, if you have someone that works here, because you have a lot of great people that work here, the problem is, is you have some that aren't so good. So, if you have someone that wants to come to you with a million-dollar question of how something is being done wrong, what protection do they have? Because the lawyers aren't going to give them protection, obviously, if you read this. So, how are you going to straighten up the mess if employees cannot go to someone when you, I'm not talking about some miniscule thing here, I'm talking, if you are doing something seriously wrong, how are you going to straighten up these departments? We requested, and we actually paid, a fraud investigator to look into some of the housing authority stuff. If you would spend, like, $10,000 and hire Moss, pick whoever you want, don't pick our person, because Martha thinks that the person worked for 7-Eleven, that they can't be, you know, it doesn't make any sense. Pick whoever you want. Pick five companies, five fraud companies, Moss Adams, Tiffany Couch's company, five different companies, have them all come in and do all of them at the same time. So, you can't take road guy's money, buy the Caps Road property that she's talking So, it just depends on how deep you want to go, because this is just the beginning. This is just one. If you think this is isolated, you are wrong. Or would you like me to give you documented information, or do I actually need to slip it to Moss Adams? Because this is what it took, obviously. Or should I just have a meeting with Don?
I think, actually, that'd be better. I understand this, Brian. You know, we've been, the commission has been fairly quiet about this, and there's a reason for that. It's not sorted out yet. We still have some renderings, some possible renderings from the arbitrator. In addition to that, Mr. Crupp has more than appropriately addressed this by sending in an investigator. Until such time as we get the preliminary investigation numbers and the justifications are made, then we're not going forward with, and again, you well know, we have two employees, this commission does. One is Mr. Matcor, and the other one is Mr. Crupp. They have employees, we do not. So, you know, certainly we'll leave it up to Mr. Crupp, who we brought in for a change.
Okay, well, I know, I realize that. You're working at it. My question is, is how fast do you want to work at it? Do you want more information or not more information?
Mr. Crupp has always wanted to have information submitted to him and take into consideration any suggestion you might make, Mr. Savis.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I think the Chair did cover some of the things we, and I think the last meeting, Chair Ludlow read into the very tail end of the meeting, the restrictions on us being able to speak to this matter. As the Chair expressed, the administrator is looking into this, and as far as other matters, you know, I have uncovered a number of things in other areas, other departments, other matters, I brought those to the attention of the administrator. And so, therefore, one of the things I suggested just a month or two ago, and we're acting on that, as far as I, I believe we are acting on, is hiring an independent internal auditor. And that will be held in a separate office, under a separate elected official, ideally the treasurer, where operational things like this will hopefully be discovered preemptively before they occur, and make sure controls and proper things are in place, look at operational type audits and activities. So, that's a measure I think is important, because it seems like we have people that we're engaging for audits and investigations here and there, and it seems to be we would probably save money with this position, having it internal but also independent, and I think that's the important thing. I have concerns, I've raised some of those, and they will be addressed shortly, so trust that it's underway.
The suggestion of an additional hiring has not been decided on. Budget Committee will have first option with that, certainly recommendations by Mr. Crupp, and then the final decision will be by this board. One would believe that if we want additional hirees, we might have to vote for the budget, which would be very important to getting this person through, if that's what the will of the county administrator is and of the Budget Committee. Commissioner Smith.
The answer to your question is yes. Bring me information. Something that I don't say, and maybe it's happening with other commissioners as well, individuals in the county have brought me areas of concern, and yes, I'm moving forward and checking on them through the channels that are available to me and the rest of the commissioners. And some of it's not very nice, and some of it's not very pretty, but that's what we're here for. Bring any information, I would be happy to sit down and talk with you about it, and then do what's within my power to do about it. But you may be disappointed if you think it's going to happen fast. Thank you, Brian.
I just have one thing.
Sure.
Do we know what the damage is yet for the trolley trail? The money payout?
The damage for the trolley trail, meaning...
The overpriced, the cost overruns?
On the trolley trail, I'm not aware of a figure at this time. Now, are you talking about the trolley trail specifically down at the Tri-Met area, or are you talking about...
Well, the whole thing, that whole project.
I haven't been briefed by, do you recall us being briefed, Mr. Crupp, in regards to cost overruns on the trolley trail?
Well, I'll follow up and explore the question. I'm not aware of cost overruns incurred by the county related to that, but I'll follow up.
Commissioner Savis.
That's another area that I kind of brought to the attention of staff, and that is, number one, is completing the project, because it's still not yet complete, which is another problem. And then, when it's complete, where do we sit with the performance of the work done thus far? The signage issue is the one that really comes to mind as being incomplete. I had the pleasure of being at the Boring Trailhead opening, and it was nice to see their signage in place, and yet that project was started and completed, frankly, far later than the trolley trail, and yet majority of the construction's been completed, but it's still, the punch card list, as I understand, is still not complete, and I have not had my questions satisfactorily answered, so hopefully we'll follow up on that. That's just another one of those issues that needs to be tended to.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maryanna Moore and Mac Woods.
Been here before, asking some of the same things, but the main thing, there's a lot of problems in Gladstone with structures that are not up to par, and of course, they're working on trying to plan this library that came about through the county vote, and they have a committee of about 30 people, and they've met three or four times, they'll meet again next Monday, and they're trying to figure out what they need, and I understand that you said they don't have to have a huge thing anymore. So, they're looking at sites, and they only have about four people from the unincorporated area. I understand that that area is planning some kind of a meeting later this week or something, because the people that use the Oak Lodge Library never seemed to have got it through their heads that their library was going to close until now, then, you know, and it's a shock. They really have a problem coming to Gladstone, and Gladstone is looking for sites, and one of the sites that might be possible, since it could be smaller, would be the old election office. And so, I'm wondering if you've made any decisions of what you're going to do with that, since there was an unused building that went to the Happy Valley Library. I'm wondering if it isn't possible, since Gladstone doesn't have the finances that Happy Valley has, if there's a chance that we might have the opportunity to use that building or any other, are there other publicly-owned spots in the Gladstone area that we might be able to utilize for a new library?
Well, real briefly, one of the charges, one of the problems is, of course, that this library should be within the city limits of Gladstone.
Yes.
And we don't own much property within the city limits of Gladstone.
You say much. You own the election office. Are there others?
You about pointed out what we own down there.
Is there anything else?
The other problem is the process necessary. It's one, to identify a property. Second of all, you have to have plans and drawings, engineering, surveying, et cetera, for a new one now we're talking about.
Yeah.
And then you have to put together the ballot measure for Gladstone, and they have to get it to us by June 30, which is a pretty daunting task.
Yes, it really is.
Now, we have declared already that the old elections office is surplus. It has not been actively marketed, however, we anticipate that soon. There is a value that the assessor has established on that property, and, you know, I've talked to a lot of people before about our properties, the county's properties, and they are the citizens' properties. So, you know, if we start giving away property in Gladstone to Gladstone, we own properties in other cities, too, and you can get ready and get in line, because everybody would be wanting the properties for free. Now, I don't, we don't put a heck of a lot of value on that building, but it would probably have to be remodeled to at least earthquake standards, and it just isn't that big, Maryanna, as you know.
I know it's not, and that's why I was wondering if there's anything else. And you say get in line, I guess Happy Valley was the top of the line, so...
Well, it wasn't here then.
I know.
Few commissioners were when that deal was cut, and they got a new library, which we were pushing very hard for them to finally take over, I might add.
Well, it's been a couple of years. I mean, you say pushing hard, but Gladstone seems to be not at the top of the line, but at the very bottom of the line. And it just, you know, because they are working against this timeframe that you're talking about, and this committee, you know, they've got 30 people about that are trying to figure things out, and they went around and looked at the site, particularly the one, I always say, on the rock pile, at Webster and Oldfield, that they finally, most of the people that had gone and finally looked at it and said, oh, my gosh, you know, we don't really want this site. And so, they're looking for something, and they'll probably have to buy another property, or I don't know, but like you say, with the timeframe, I keep going back to Happy Valley, but the timeframe for them is to keep saying you're going to get out of the library business, and it goes on and on. So, why is there a timeframe for Gladstone when there doesn't seem to have been one for Happy Valley?
Mr. Crupp.
I can answer that question. We've actually asked Happy Valley to move forward with assuming the responsibility for library operations by the middle of this year. We've given them a goal of June 30, and our staff has been working with the staff with Happy Valley towards that end, and that was something we undertook for precisely the reason that you raised, is we want to be able to treat both these situations and achieve our goals with both these situations at the same time, so...
Well, and let's face it, the Happy Valley equation was taken into consideration, and it was salt. That money which is available still to Gladstone was used for this library in Happy Valley. So, in essence, the job is done, the takeover hasn't been finalized, but the investment, which is still out there for Gladstone, I know they've gone through over a million dollars already, and there's another 1.5 out there, too, but, you know, they have to meet certain criteria in order for that money to be given forward, and you know that, right?
Yeah, I know that, except that it seems like the actual date time doesn't seem to be that definite in other places, like Happy Valley, for instance, it keeps, now they've got a timeframe, but this has gone on a long time, even though they had the building.
Well, again, we were talking about the staffing of it versus the building.
I know.
To keep on the building side, Happy Valley, the building was built, and all of the monies that were going to go to that city for capital investment for library have been spent. Now, that is not the case with Gladstone for a variety of reasons, but let's face it, how many years have they been working on this?
Oh, I know.
I think what the people in unincorporated Oak Grove Jennings Lodge, however, have to remember is this. Gladstone probably will have their own debt service on this library. They, the citizens of Gladstone, will be on the line to pay for that bonded indebtedness. We all appreciate the fact that a certain amount of people will be served by that library, and those people, each of them, whether they're in city limits or not, a certain amount of money will be given over to that library to take care of them. Now, that is over and above, or I should say, separate from, the fact that the citizens of Gladstone will have long-term debt on this, which is a little bit different than for Jennings Lodge and Oak Grove residents, they don't.
I know.
So, we've got to give some deference to the city, who's required to have the library and the debt that goes with that. So, I appreciate Ed Gronke and others working very hard on this, and I appreciate that he's part of that committee, and there's only four, like you say, from unincorporated. But certainly, they are going to have a meeting on this, it's a combination, I think, of CPOs to talk about that and issues, and I'm sure they'll be coming forth with their advice, which will be then taken to the group of 30, and they can come forward with the recommendations as necessary and make a decision. But it's really tough for the county to enter into on this, when really it's a Gladstone project, because it's going to be their building, because they're going to pay for it. Capital cost, they'll be paying for it initially. There isn't any money saved.
Yeah, I'm not part of the committee, but I go and observe, and I think it'd be worth your while to come and observe, too. It's, you know, these 30 people that are trying to locate a site and a building, plan and everything.
I will be involved soon. I cannot make it this coming Monday, but my policy coordinator will be going. I told Mr. Gronke and the mayor that I'll probably get involved to some extent, but certainly, you know, within the county's purview, we only have the money that we have, and that we've been holding it for some period of time. We gave it, we took it back, and we would like it to come to a decision very soon. Commissioner Smith.
Just a side note, I am scheduled to go out and meet with you folks, but just to observe, you know, I have no authority to tell anybody what to do. You know, this board, again, has issued a statement on what they need to do. You know, I can go and hold your hand, but that would be about it. Thanks, Maryanna.
Well, that's all I'm doing, too. I'm just observing, but know how bad it's been, and to try and get through what they were trying before, you know, which the city, the residents cannot afford, and so, getting it through a vote, you know, they've got to have something that's reasonable.
Okay, well, thank you. It's always a conundrum down there right now, but we're all hoping for the best out of the group. Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Chair Ludlow and county commissioners. I am Mac Woods, Clackamas County, and it's, I want to first compliment a couple of people. One is, it's in this room right now today, one is a lady to my left that does a lot, I ain't going to call any names out of respect of helping or hurting her. Another one is a young man that's in this room also, I happened to be his Navy recruiter over 30 years ago, and he put in over 20 years in the Navy. He knows, can tell anybody more about me than I know about me. He's a good man. I know for a fact, I know his family, I ain't going to call... I know for a fact, I know his family, I ain't going to call any names either. Wonderful man, part of the folks at work here. I have one concern. Sometime ago, I spoke about honesty, truthfulness, and respect, and most all of the people that I see speaking here, like this beautiful teenager sitting beside me, is she's respectful. She's intelligent. She has all the things that I wish I could add up to, like her and several others. But the folks with the, that does the videos do a wonderful job also. I want to compliment them. They do a great job under adverse conditions. Me, Mac Woods, you don't know a lot about, but my uniform is my scars, and my armor is my word. It's provable. I have the CDs. I usually buy around $20 worth every week to document what has gone on right here with the county commissioners since I started coming, and I don't go back to '04 and '06 like a bunch of stuff that I've pulled up records on, but I'm going to. I want to, I think it's most important for all the public taxpayers, property owners, to talk about and know what we're paying for, and how we vote, and who we vote for, based on the word of, and the vote right here in this county, and how our tax money is spent. It's important to me. I'm just one of millions. But it's very, very, very important to be honest, be truthful, and be respectful. I have had my name called many times, which comes across to me and others as a way of trying to belittle my character and smear, smudge my truthfulness, my honesty, my facts. And you, above all, Mr. Ludlow, are a principal broker like myself. We've been a long time. A principal broker is one that's over the rest of the realtors brokers to teach them how to do things right and figure out who owns property. I'll let it go at that and talk more next week. Thank you all.
Mr. Woods? I would say that, to say that our video people are under adverse conditions is probably not correct.
No, when they go out of their way to come and accommodate, like when we had to go different places, they've done a great job.
Oh.
We noticed that.
Yeah. I thought you meant, you know, we keep them in a box all day and...
No, 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 no. They do a great job, and they're honest.
Yeah. You can't go out. No, I appreciate that. They do an excellent job, and a lot of times they have to do travel with us to town halls and other hearings.
And again, I'm not calling no names out of respect, but just complimenting them, and I'm not, don't want to intentionally downgrade or say somebody's not being honest by name. I just don't do that. It's called respect. I understand it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Woods.
Thank you. Have a good day, all of you. Keep smiling.
All right.
As long as you can.
And the last card today I have is Cindy Lewis-Wolfram.
Ladies first, well, I'll tell them.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Appreciate it. That's the last card. It's the last card?
Yeah. Sure. Yeah. I have it now.
Good morning, Commissioners, Chair Ludlow. Excuse the voice today, I'm still struggling with a little bit of a cold. I'm here representing the Clackamas CPO this morning. My name is Cindy Lewis-Wolfram. I live in unincorporated Milwaukee. We have had several representations from the Planning Development Department regarding an industrial area in Clackamas over the last few years. We've been very excited because we have been told that the area is being looked to develop into a prime, prime industrial area that will bring in lots of employment to Clackamas County. That's very exciting. One of the things that's been going on, however, is the development of plots of land for a more of a sewer center for Clackamas County, right in the area of the development that I just mentioned. One of those pieces of property has a temporary lease on it and is waiting to hear back from the EQ whether it can, you know, stay on there, and we understand that it's, quote, "temporary." A new piece of property is being developed, and while it has not given us any strong information that it's going to be an open sewer development or an open reclamation development, it's bringing additional refuse into the, into the area, which is going to eliminate potential for upscale development in that area. We would like the board and/or the Planning Commission to please take a look at this use of the little property. And while it probably conforms to what is in the codes, it's not really what the Development Agency has been telling us they want to develop for that area, and we would encourage them to go back to the original plan. Our residents are a little bit upset, the businesses are, that are going to be affected by odors and other traffic situations are very upset. And that brings me to a couple of other little things that I need to discuss with you from the subdivision, but possibly with the lack of time, we'll talk over with the Chief Administrator after the meeting. I would like to add my word, however, to Mr. Ludlow's about the meeting that is being held next week on the 2nd of April in the unincorporated areas in North County. This meeting that's being held is to discuss the library, the Oak Grove, current Oak Grove library merged into Gladstone, and to get input from the neighbors. And I would encourage the neighborhood to please participate, bring your concerns to that meeting. The Clackamas CPO, the Jennings Lodge CPO, and the Oak Grove Community Council and CPO are bringing this meeting together so that we can get all the concerns and ideas put into hand to give to Jim Martin and to give to Ed Gronke, and there's one other person I'm forgetting, and I apologize, who represent us on this Gladstone Committee. And now is the time to talk about what you want to see happening for that library. So, thank you.
Commissioner Bernard?
So, I don't know how many notices go out to CPOs and villages and hamlets about these things, but it might be, you know, assuming it's reasonable, it might not be a bad idea for us to just have those notices given to us, just so we could look at what people might be concerned about. None of us have, well, I have not heard of this project at all, and just before you, another speaker mentioned it also.
VP, yes.
So it might be an, you know, assuming there's not 150, 200 of them, or 1,000 of them going on, it might be worth taking a look at some of these.
Sure thing. Okay. The other thing is, I'm sure everybody realizes that the commission years ago went away from being a hearings officer on these kind of things. These decisions for conditional use specifically are made through our staff with recommendations and a hearings officer, and so they have the full charge of this. There is no doubt, you're right, Cindy, that we create policy, and this policy should be used, but I would say that in conjunction with Dan Johnson, who is our urban renewal manager, you know, we would be glad to look at and see how sewer mixes in with the grand plan for that particular area which we own and are trying to divest ourselves and put back on the propy tax rolls. Commissioner Savas?
I just want, if I might, it's not urban renewal, it is urban renewal, but it's not utilizing the urban renewal process that is in place, to best of my knowledge.
Right, it's just adjacent to, or very close by to, the piece that we, the only tier-one piece we have, which we're trying to, again, get back on the propy tax rolls. Commissioner Savas?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to just kind of address the second issue that Cindy has mentioned, and also Mary Anna Moore about the library, and I know that it's created a lot of heartburn with a lot of folks. It's one of those situations where the cities and the county got together and came up the plan, a grand plan, where the libraries would be located in the cities and the unincorporated area would be served by those cities. And in this particular circumstance with Gladstone, this whole process is in the hands of Gladstone, and I know that Mary Anna's in the back of the room listening, and that we have some represent, representation, but not anywhere in the scale of really what the population is. It's an area about 40,000 to 50,000 people that'll be served, unincorporated, will be served by the city of 10,000, who will be paying the property taxes that they duly deserve to fund that library in the future, but the capital expense is that of the city, so they're sharing some of that burden. But I think this is a great example, when this came up at a Jennings Lodge meeting just the other night, an example of, and just an imbalance, you know, an equity issue as far as representation, and the voters passed it, but I don't think the voters truly understood it. I think that's one of the, you know, in hindsight, and I know that I was concerned about it, and I know that that, even that unincorporated area, if you look at the precinct numbers, they didn't support that measure because they, some of them realized they were going to lose a library. That was centrally located in that population of about 35,000. So, again, the chair's mentioned, other, the administrators mentioned that this, you know, the process is underway, and we hope they'll get a good result. If they don't, then we'll have to take another look, and that other look or option, if Gladstone can't get this across the finish line, may be a more centrally located library in the unincorporated area that might be managed and served, administered by the city of Gladstone. We already have a precedent of that occurring, but we, I think we need to solve that problem, because on the surface, it doesn't work out for that area. It's a huge, the most dense area in the county, and to have it somewhat unserved, you know, from a location standpoint, doesn't make a lot of sense, and perhaps that's part of the problem in the sense that this library's got to be far bigger than the city of Gladstone's population in the sense of serving, you know, not in, not in its size. So it's awkward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, that brings us with no discussion items to the consent agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of Amendment Number Two to the agreement between Clackamas County and Easton Ridge LLC to use federal home program funds to rehabilitate an existing affordable multifamily rental housing project, approval of a laboratory services agreement with Laboratory Corporation of America for medical laboratory testing services, under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Metro for the Clackamas Regional Area Performance Measures and Multimodal Area Project, under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes, under County Council, approval of a lease by and between T5 Equities and Clackamas County for the District Attorney's Office, and under Central Communication, CCOM, approval of a joint agency computer aid dispatch purchase with Washington County Communications and the City of Lake Oswego Communications, and that completes the consent agenda.
Do any Commissioners wish to remove any of the consent agenda items? I'll ask for a motion.
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by my Commissioner Bernard, second by my Commissioner Schrader. Any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye. Passes 5-0. County Administrator update. Mr. Krupp?
I have quite a few items, if you don't mind.
We will be patient.
So, very good. So, you know, last week I talked a bit about some good news about the job situation for Clackamas County, and I had some additional details to fill in for you this morning. One is, is that we understand that between Clackamas County, Multnomah, and Washington Counties, we've added some 20,000 new jobs to the region over the course of the past 12 months. That's 50 new jobs a day, and accounts for almost half of the, well, actually does account for half of the nearly 40,000 private sector jobs that have been gained and created in the state of Oregon as a whole since February of last year, so that's really good news. And affiliated and associated with that, we received information from WorkSource Oregon a little earlier this week, advising us that Clackamas County households lead the state with adjusted gross incomes of over $72,000 a year, so that's, again, is an indicator of our economic health and well-being here in Clackamas County. I also wanted to share with you another little piece of good news we received from University of Wisconsin, which publishes an annual report ranking county health conditions, and for 2014, Clackamas County ranks among the top Oregon counties in overall health outcomes, such as the length of life and quality of life in Oregon. And, you know, the study looks at things like clinical care, mental health, and also social and economic conditions. So again, really, really good news for us. Our transportation staff are once again doing really good things out there in the area east of Hubbard, just inside the county boundaries at the intersection of South Whiskey Hill Road and South Meridian Road. You know, we've received requests from citizens in that area to do some things with that intersection. We have followed up in response to that, installed an always stop at that corner. As you know, that there's a school, the 91 School is located right there, and so this work will help to deter high-speed travel through that area. It'll resolve some of the site distance problems and increase overall safety for travelers, as well as parents and children coming and going to the school in the area. I wanted also to let you know that work is earnestly underway regarding the health centers audit. County Commissioners recall, as we were responding to the financial challenge of the health clinics, we committed to bringing on an independent audit and review of the financial condition. Three things we are looking at, one is to accurately determine the sources of what would have been the reporting gap that led to the emergence of the problem. The second would be to evaluate the three-year financial plan for the continuing capacity of the clinics to serve, and then the third item would be to identify what we would call best practices to be able to manage the financial conditions of the clinic over that period of time. And so that work is contracted for, is currently underway. When the report's completed, we'll be bringing that back to you in the form of a study session and informing you as to what its recommendations and findings and conclusions are. Earlier, you heard from Mr. Johnson, concerns about water and environment services. Just wanted to let you know that I am expecting sometime in the near future to receive the report of the independent review that we have requested be conducted to examine contracting practices there, and so just once I receive that report and get an opportunity to review its findings and conclusions and ascertain what would be an appropriate set of course of action in consultation with County Council and our Employee Services Department, we will be making that report public and available. So that was one of our commitments, to be transparent about the outcome of that report. Then I, you know, this is, I'm following up from a suggestion from Chair Ludlow. Of course, we've all heard about the Oso landslide in Snohomish County, Washington, and certainly all of us here in Clackamas County are keeping the individuals and the families and the communities that are impacted by this tragedy in our thoughts. It's understandably a difficult time for everyone involved, and we need to remember that landslides are also a concern here in Clackamas County. And our Emergency Management Department and our Planning and Zoning Division in the Department of Transportation and Development have been watching the situation closely to learn about landslide response, recovery, and planning. And in light of the events, Chair Ludlow has asked that we put together what would be a presentation at your evening business meeting on April the 17th to talk about and learn about the various elements of this kind of geologic challenge. So we will have a presentation from Planning and Zoning that will talk about the current processes and resources regarding landslide mapping and zoning ordinances. We'll hear about the recent mapping effort that is being conducted through hazard mitigation funds that we've received from FEMA, and we'll be talking about how those maps can be of help and assistance and support to protect the safety of our citizens and their homes. to protect the safety of our citizens in their homes in the future. We'll also be hearing from Emergency Management Department staff regarding general preparedness and what their role is should there be a landslide in our jurisdiction that would be of similar scale to the thing that's been experienced in Snohomish County. I will say this, I've had personal experience with the effects of a landslide, both from a working professional and having to deal with a situation that involves some sixty homes. Not a situation like this where you had a catastrophic landslide that the collapse threatened and resulted in the death of many people, but in the case of a, it was a very slow, what they call a deep-seated translational landslide. Many of the individuals there lost everything. At least two dozen homeowners were never able to come back and rebuild because of the conditions that existed out there. We're fortunate, nobody was injured or hurt through that, but having experienced what it is that people go through when something like that happens to them. And then I personally, my own family, back when I was in high school, nineteen sixty-nine, our own home moved down a hill.
Ooh.
We were fortunate, and this was after my father had considerable difficult conversations with the Los Angeles Building Department in trying to put together a creative solution to help repair, fix, and mitigate the situation. But I do recall getting up one morning with the family and realizing that the home was actually slowly but surely inexorably moving down the hill. I remember the distress that my mother felt about the possibility that we might lose everything. And I will say that that particular experience actually had a huge impact on me. I mean, it led me to develop an interest in community development, planning, land use, and that sort of thing. It had a significant impact. It changed my future because it completely altered my college plans because of the family financial issues.
Wow.
So, I just share that with you as my own sort of personal experience with these things. Certainly, the thing going on in Oso with the continuing recovery work there is of magnitude and dimension far and away more significant and challenging than that. But knowing what it's like, and knowing when you're not sure whether or not you're going to be able to come back home, has a significant effect. So, I'm hoping people take an opportunity to listen to the program on Thursday evening the seventeenth, so.
Thank you. That's, I got to congratulate you. That's your longest one yet. So, good information. It's now time for Commissioners Communications, and Commissioner Savis, we might as well start with you, your light's on.
Well, yeah, I was going to just ask, was it last month Administrator Krupp that you indicated was like twelve hundred or fourteen hundred new jobs in the county?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. And I heard from Lynn Wallace with the State Employment Agency that the number, I heard from her just the other day, that the number, we had recovered forty-four percent of our jobs back. So, those jobs you spoke to last week equate to a fourteen percent increase from forty-four percent recovery to fifty-eight percent. So, we're on, we're on track. So, that's kind of the good news. So, thanks for that report. I did want to also remind everyone that on April second, we have our Commissioner Roundtable. It's at five-thirty at DSB every first Wednesday of every month, and I look forward to anyone bringing any issues they have forward. I did want to talk a little about libraries. I know we talked about it to some degree, but there, there is a great concern, and I attended a meeting in Jennings Lodge the other night, and a presentation was made about Park, the Parks District. And somehow, we need to balance the inequity. I know we talked about libraries, we talked about parks. And what's similar about these, both of these, is that the district or these areas where this occurs, there's a substantial unincorporated population that, whether that's Jennings Lodge, Oak Lodge, Oak Grove, near, on the, on the east side of the freeway, whether that's near Happy Valley or near Milwaukee, southeast of, that, there's a lot of folks out there that are not really represented by actions of these as well, or feel they're not really represented. I know that it's strong to say that they're not, but they are. That's our job as county commissioners. But there is a sentiment out there that they're not having as good, as strong a voice or as much influence as the cities. And I can feel that, I understand that, and I think we just need to do a better job to make sure that somehow the influence of a city is balanced out by the population of those numbers. We kind of recognize that. And we do serve that role, we just need to make sure that it's in balance. And sometimes the staff, our staff respond to the city, a mayor, or the city council, or a city manager, and have that constant communication. But we don't have that from the unincorporated, there is no city manager for the unincorporated area. There is no mayor from the unincorporated area, and somehow getting that balance is important. So, I think we need to balance that, understand that perspective, and that influences, those constant influences from the cities are valid. You know, there's nothing wrong with that, that's normal. But somehow, we have to weigh that with the quiet majority as well. So, the other thing is, I'm hearing, still hearing a lot of interest and feedback, even as late as last night, about interest about a trolley, the bridge, where the Trolley Bridge was once, it was just recently torn down or fell down in Gladstone, and heard from some people, even again as late as last night, that what do we do with the money to study? And are we going to pursue looking at an alternative bridge or a new bridge to go across there? I hear this from Oregon City people, I'm hearing this from Gladstone people in the area, that that'd be of value. So, I don't know what the future of those monies, I know that was not quite funded, but it was, it's going to be funded in the twenty-fifteen, twenty-eighteen STIP process, I believe, or the active transportation funding that was, that came for. So, we'll hope that, that there's some determination as the, what that money would be used for. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader?
Well, a number of things I'd like to talk about this morning. That is, this weekend, there is an Oregon Women's Veterans Conference in Eugene, and it is open to all women who served in the military. And I do know that Cameron Smith, the head of Oregon Department of Veteran Affairs, will be there. And I am assured that Representative Julie Parrish, who is a military spouse, will be speaking at that event. So, any women who have been involved in the military, it's a wonderful conference and a chance to get together. On Tuesday, I'm going to be at the Boring CPO to discuss the need for maintenance on county roads. And I see Mr. Bates in the audience. Good morning, Mr. Bates. And I'm sure that you'll get a lot of folks there as we go through our presentation at Boring, one of my favorite places to go. A workforce update. Basically, on April third, at the Alcatraz Shriners Center in Wilson Mill, there is going to be a conversation about the Oregon Workforce Investment Board's plans for statewide and regional workforce changes. Essentially, what they are trying to do from bottom up and top down is to align what the business needs are for workforce with how we get people jobs. So, we encourage all the businesses or anyone who is interested in jobs and really creating jobs and workforce to attend that conversation, and I am planning to attend that. Finally, an announcement about the Veterans Standup at Clackamas Community College on Saturday, April fifth. It will go from ten to three AM. It's a free public event for veterans and their families. And you can find information on our county website. Oh, there it is, the standup. And I know that both Commissioner Smith and I are planning to attend that. And actually, so is, oh, I stole it from the chair. As is, we will have our balloon master here, our wonderful chair.
Thank you.
Who delighted my own grandson with a balloon hat, by the way.
Serious chair.
That we put on, that we put on Curious George. Remember, big Curious George, I bought him.
I remember that.
He very graciously made a balloon hat for Curious George, and my little, my little guy really loved that. So, that's the news from Lake Wobegon this week, and it's going to keep working for you. One comment about libraries, I was on board when we formed that district, and it is a dilemma of how we actually centralize where we can have libraries so everybody, unincorporated and incorporated, gets the appropriate level of service. I'm less tied to where it is, as long as people can get to it, whether it's in the city or out of a city. The issue is, can we partner with a city to have them help run it while we maintain the computer system? And Sandy very graciously has a satellite library up on the mountain where they actually do the work for it there. And so, that's kind of what we're looking at. I mean, I think that one of the reasons we talked about having them in cities is that when you looked at a map at the time, it looked as if most of those areas were somewhat central, so ease of access for, for people in a city and in the unincorporated area. We really need to start thinking more like, in my opinion, I'm going to be in the soapbox a little bit, I'm sorry, Chair, as communities of people who help and, and work with one another. Yes, we have cities, yes, we have unincorporated areas, but none of us can have the services unless we all work together to get them. And one of the comments I want to make, building on what Commissioner Savis said, is the issue we have in these unincorporated urban areas, in our unincorporated areas, they don't have any other representatives than us. And there is continually kind of a rub, this is true, it's been in this county for a long time, between the governance of how cities are working and then what we have to do as commissioners to make sure that our citizens in the unincorporated areas are also represented. So, that's how the library issue is going to play out. Also, I'm going to address hamlets and villages very quickly because I remember being in a meeting with our cities, and they were very upset about organizing hamlets and villages. They felt the community planning organizations were enough, and why were we doing this? And I had to very graciously get up and say, "Well, because remember, you represent people in your area, but our unincorporated citizens are important, and we're all they've got." And I had to, I had to very graciously say, "No, we're going to go ahead with this process." And yes, it gets very contentious, people get hot under the collar, but you know what? This is America, this is Oregon, and I don't see any other better way to do business than to get people together however we can to discuss problems and issues, even if it becomes unpleasant. Because remember, I always think too, it's my job as a, as an elected, you know, it's my job to take tomatoes sometimes. Buck stops with us, and, you know, if we have to, if we have to go out there and people are hot under the collar, so be it. It's our job to, it's our job to take it. So, there's my soapbox for the morning. Very elegant.
Incredibly so. Commissioner Bernard?
So, I also have a number of items. One thing that I thought the job information was very valuable, you know, at one point, seventy percent of the people, employed people in Clackamas County actually left the county to go to their jobs. So, I don't, I don't know, I haven't seen any statistics on that. Actually, when I took office, which was almost the height of the down economy, unemployment rate was eleven percent, nearly eleven percent. And depending upon where you look, it's six point seven now, and it's probably gone down. And, and what amazes me is that the county lived through all that. I mean, that was some tough times. And I think if you look statewide, Clackamas County did an outstanding job. So, this week, I went out on a ride-along, Meals on Wheels, in the Milwaukee area, out of Milwaukee Center. It's, if you've not done it, do it. It's a fantastic program. Milwaukee Center serves sixty-five thousand meals a year. It's the biggest meal site in the metro area, has over one hundred volunteers, which we got to thank because they don't even get gas. They do it all on their own. And the great thing about it is that a lot of these people may not have family, and it's an opportunity to check up on them. And I personally took the meals to the door and, and, you know, talked to them, and lots of folks have dogs. There's also a Meals on Wheels for Dogs program that, that's pretty successful, too. But about fifty percent of the funds are supplied, fundraising efforts supply about fifty percent of the funds to serve meals, which average cost is six dollars and ninety cents. The average donation is seventy cents, and so the government is reimbursing two dollars and ninety cents. So, the government actually contributes two ninety. So, the remaining three thirty has to be raised. One of the opportunities that will end this month is that Bob's Red Mill has promised to match donations up to seventy-five hundred dollars if, if by the end of the month, that much money is raised. And you can drop off your donation at New Seasons Market in Happy Valley or Clackamas Federal Credit Union on McLaughlin Boulevard. So, thank you, Bob's Red Mill, thank you for all the volunteers, and thank you for a great bunch of staff who cooks those meals, prepares them, separates them out, and, and, you know, delivers those meals. And so, last night, I went to a CSAP graduation. CSAP is a Center for Substance Abuse Prevention. Seven women, all heroin addicts, former heroin addicts graduated last night. And Chris Hoy said it was unusual to have all heroin addicts. But this program is just outstanding, not, some of the officers, corrections officers, got standing ovations when they came out. Can you imagine thanking somebody who's imprisoned you? But they did, and hugs and excitement, and kids told, well, they're not kids, they're young adults, told their stories about how they lost everything, respect for themselves, their family, everything, and got to the bottom. And the judge sometimes sent people there, or sometimes they had a choice, go there or go to prison. It's not much of a choice. And some even said, you know, sometimes they thought, "Well, prison would be better than this." But they got through this program, and the, the time they spanned varies from as much as two and a half, three years to, you know, eight months, eighteen months. So, it varies. But the important part is, after I met a new parent, a woman who had graduated from the program with a new baby, and, you know, it was just outstanding to think that here's this new baby in a healthy family who will, that cycle will be broken, and that child has a chance, the mother has a chance, the family has a chance, and all of that is possible because of the parents and the family and the team that works to save these people. Another woman was finishing up her master's program. So, amazing work. So, Community Corrections' mission is to promote public safety and provide offenders with opportunities to become productive members of the community. And I think the CSAP program is a great example of how the success that occurs. And I, I recommend that all of you go sometime to one of those graduations. I had tears in my eyes. And there's some amazing stories. Another woman walked up after the thing and said, "Thank you, you saved my life." Very, very valuable. So, last week, there were a number of comments that I tried to make, but voices were louder than mine, about my property in Milwaukee and the impact of light rail. One of the comments was that I said I only own two pieces of property. The truth is, if you look at the minutes, it says that only two pieces of property will be impacted by light rail. And, I don't know, here's a picture of one of them. Here's a picture of the other one. If you go by my property, you'll see that they have been impacted. Matter of fact, business is down seventy-five percent. So, the impact has been pretty, pretty negative. And this is the argument I always said, Jim Bernard's going to get richer, or he's going to go broke. Well, thank goodness, my dad taught me to watch the money, and that's what I do, and Bernard's garage is going to survive. The other thing is, is that I may have purchased property recently. This, this building here, built in nineteen thirty-five by my grandfather, light rail wasn't even anticipated back then, this building is a many, many times remodeled, was built in nineteen twenty-five by- nineteen twenty-five by my grandfather, former site of Milwaukee Saint John's Catholic Church. My grandfather's brother was the pastor. Secondly, that perhaps I bought some new property. By the way, here is the map. Well, I don't know, you guys can't see it. Max's map is much better, except that he stars some property I don't own, that I might have bought some new property in two thousand and five. In fact, I did. I bought some new property because after twenty years of paying my dad, he signed the title to me. So in nineteen eighty-five, long before I was mayor, long before I even considered being mayor, long before I was a commissioner, I finished paying my dad off. That was a great day, we had a big party, he burned the note. And so twenty years later, the property became mine. And so I did, I did buy some property, finalizing the payments in two thousand and five. The other one is that I have failed to recuse myself on votes during the light rail thing. So on August twenty-second, two thousand and twelve, look at the records, the record is, after I found out that there would indeed be an impact, a seventy-five percent decrease in business, on my property, I actually determined that there was an impact on my property. And as stated in these votes about financing light rail, and Paul, no, you said no, and I abstained on every single one. So the one to, the intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and TriMet abstained. Paul, no. The others, yes. Approval of authorizing a resolution to finance Portland, Milwaukee light rail, Paul, no. I abstained. The others, yes. The second, third one was a motion for the development agency owns some property there to execute a supplemental agreement. Paul, no. I abstained. Others, yes. The fourth motion that day was North Clackamas Parks. Paul, no. I abstained. The others, yes. So if you want to check the record, check it and look it over. It is available, I found this today, well, staff found this today, in just a matter of a couple of minutes. But nineteen twenty-five, light rail, two thousand and fourteen. My grandpa was amazing. Good job picking a spot where light rail would come by. And bad job in that you didn't put the door on the other side because I could have actually used this building. But thank you and this material, be happy to hand it out. Look it up on the web. And also, the ethics complaint was mentioned, and the ethics complaint, if you were to read it, was totally thrown out. And I was actually appreciated Max's claim that I did all this bad stuff. And yes, Mac, I named you and you've named me many, many times, even though you say you don't name names. The facts are amazing and I really appreciated our legal staff at that time telling me what I should say and shouldn't say. And if you, if you follow those, and they're probably available at the city in Milwaukee, you'll see that I identified all those issues. The other thing has nothing to do with this, it has to do with the Sandy River flood. The slide up in Washington's a terrible thing. You know, Oregon City has a number of sites which are identified. One is an affordable apartment unit that's sitting on a hill that is sliding and kind of worries me when I think about it. There was a Street of Dreams home development that turned out to be a slide area. And, you know, we, we have tried to identify, you know, to tell people to beware, new maps, identify those areas. And the Chair said, "That does take, it's some of your responsibility to look." But, so my recommendation is to look, but as far as Sandy River, the flood zone has always existed. The Clackamas County refused to allow a development along the Sandy River. It was taken to court and we lost. They built a development, consequently in this last flood, some of those properties were lost. So whose responsibility is it? I really think that, you know, there's a, I had just written the word rub-down, rub, when Charlotte, I mean Charlotte, when Martha said the word rub. But there's a lot of rub between those who want to sell and those who buy and how much information they should get. I think there should be some discussion about whether a title should say flood zone, slide zone. And so, because many people buy homes, I can tell you, I've never looked up the history of a home that I was buying, whether it was in a flood zone or not. I did buy a house in the flood zone one time. And I bought a house in southeast Portland once and they said it was in a flood zone and that all of Portland would have had to be underwater should that occur. And so I actually beat that one. But now, with the insurance rates going so high, people need to be sure that what they're buying is, is something they're willing to take some responsibility for. And I know John's mentioned this before, but if you ask the realtor and they know that it is true, they have to answer you. And John might mention some, they have to answer you and if they don't answer you properly or give you the truth, then there's some liability on their part. So ask when you buy a piece of property. And one more thing, hamlets and villages. I was mayor at the time and I was not happy about hamlets and villages. I've changed my opinion. I think they have a lot of value. I was involved in complete community process, the, every time, I went to every meeting. So there is a lot of value. And the most important part is villages that have taxing ability. I think it's very important that we continue participating in selection of board members in villages because of that ability. As far as hamlets, I sometimes wonder why we do it, but I'd sure like to see more people involved in their hamlet and village. I can tell you Stafford Hamlet is, the attendance is amazing. They really work, that's the most hardest working hamlet Clackamas County has. So thank you and have a good weekend.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I will be going to the Veterans Standup on April fifth at Clackamas Community College with Martha and maybe some other board members, veterans. Issues is something that I hold near and dear to my heart, I've worked on for many years before I became a member of this board. The April second, library meeting in Gladstone, I'll be at attendance. And I do understand the issues in the unincorporated areas where they want a library, but I think we can get to a situation on this. We can get to an agreement because we have to get to an agreement. The county has given a lot of money to all of our cities in the county for a library and it's best that we get our due diligence done and go forward with it. I'll be anxious to listen to the concerns of the people who will be served or not served, but, you know, I live in the country and I travel five miles to the library. So it's all perspective. If I have to go out of Oak Grove to Gladstone, to me, that's not a very long way to go since you're not a city, but I think we just need to, the board isn't going to, I don't believe this board is going to tell anybody what to do in this situation. There's been a lot of appeals made to this board for to do this or to do that. It's really not our job to make the decision for the folks out there who receive the money. But we can certainly help with communications, getting to a decision on this, and that's what we're trying to do. About hamlets and villages, yes, some of them do work well and some of them don't and some of them are downright destructive, as one has been highlighted in the South Clackamas County area. There are certain rules and regulations to be followed, we want to make sure they do that. And, you know, I think the best thing that a public servant can do in any capacity is first do no harm. That's our goal. That's certainly not the case of a member in this particular hamlet. And we'll be pursuing that, we'll be investigating and we will compile a lot of information and then make a decision to go forward on that. To, to make your case known about any issue that anybody may have in the county, you do not have to be a member of a CPO, you don't have to be a member of a village or a hamlet, you can be an individual with an issue to come to any commissioner here or any of our staff to say, "Hey, what's going on?" And I get those all the time and I'm sure the other board members do. And as I said earlier, I have people come to me all the time with a complaint or a concern and I have followed it up with staff. Sometimes I think I'm probably the, the one that has the most complaints on people as far as land use concerns, you know, I get a lot of the land use people coming to me saying, "Why, why, why, why?" And it takes time to run it down and check it out, but that's the way it is uncovering every rock, uncovering every detail to see how we can help folks get to yes on this. So that's what we do here and we do the best we can. So that's all I have to say, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'll run through some quick things. The, I was able to go to Oregon City Business Alliance meeting the other day that was met, who met for a briefing from TriMet. And Oregon City was, were great complainers of the fact that it's one thing to have, you know, a couple buses running up and down McLaughlin, a couple up Molalla Avenue, but this is a very big city we're in here, the county seat. And yet there's no lines from New Era, for example, a kind of heavily more densely part of Oregon City, yet there's nothing that runs from ninety-nine at New Era up that road to pick up people and they want to be picked up. So I took that with me and then, then later, yesterday specifically, I was able to speak, I was invited to speak to TriMet Board of Directors. Now, that's a great opportunity for a guy like me. And so I took to them the message from the board, because I had asked permission, so to speak, from the board, to deliver them the following message, "I will be putting on the agenda later this year, the following question. Should we not study, as stewards of the taxpayer money, should we not at least study the idea that perhaps this county, including five more interested cities in this, could we not investigate whether we can do it better, faster, and cheaper than TriMet?" They can, thank you. They continued to cut, cut routes and they continue, they're over one billion dollars into debt, which they claim that they've got handled, I phrased it like, "That's a small Band-Aid on one of the thousand cuts you have." Now, here's an interesting statistic, this year, TriMet from our employers, now understanding this entire county is not in the TriMet district, only a portion of it. This year, they're taking over thirty-seven million dollars from our businesses. Next year, it'll be thirty-nine million dollars. And I just simply ask, what are we really getting our full measure of worth from that thirty-nine million dollars? Oregon City did their own presentation again, expressing the things I'd heard at the Oregon City Business Alliance, that they, they don't, they don't think they're getting their fair share, their, the worth involved. We all know that especially the poor and the infirm depend on this kind of service. Take an example like Smart, which is in Wilsonville, their version of transit, they do it cheaper? They do great service. Dial a ride. I mean, literally, you want a ride, you dial it in, they'll pick you up at your door. Now, there's a lot more at Clackamas County than just the TriMet district. You take such fantastic areas, we have the Mountain Express, and I testified all this, you can see it at the TriMet site, but take the Mountain Express, which we're partnering in, where people that work at Timberline, a lot of them just love riding that bus from Sandy where they park their car and take it up to work. In addition to that, the recreational opportunities. Certainly, we would believe that a few more buses would be great to have through there. Some buses running from Molalla through Colton to Estacada, which is unheard of for TriMet. Those kind of things we have to look at. And to look at, like I say, what we can do with thirty-nine million dollars and five more cities asking us, "Yeah, we'd like to look in on that process of investigation." So again, that was my message to TriMet last night, I attended the Community Health Center Council meeting. It's an interesting group. See, that group is responsible for the operation of the health centers. Now, we all know we've had a little bit of problem with that lately, specifically money. Projections gone awry, we had to loan two point five million dollars to keep the health centers afloat. And now the commission has said every month, "We want basically a P and L, how you doing" kind of thing. Now, these people, now interesting, we don't appoint this board. Now, we have seventy advisory groups, we don't appoint this board. They are elected individually. And yet we are mutually responsible, I emphasize that, mutually responsible for the operation of these centers. So it's nice to know that we have great partners and specifically the Chair, Mike Sluss, doing a great job there, interested people, and a lot of those people are actually users of the healthcare system. Understand this, on our health centers, there are people that are there that are insured, there are people that uninsured, and the biggest income by far of income to our health centers is from Medicaid. And that will probably increase, as great confusion as to Affordable Healthcare Act, Cover Oregon or Cover Not Oregon, and specifically what we do about the people that are still uninsured after all of those magnanimous gestures. And there's a lot of people dropping through the cracks. So it's great to be with a group like that. Now, I would like to announce that March thirtieth is the Federal Vietnam Veterans Day. Ladies and gentlemen, you know, we talk about and we see certainly in airports, I've been participatory in that. When you see a bunch of guard or active duty walking through, what do you do? You applaud them, you thank them. That never happened with the Vietnam veterans. They came home and they were the scourge. They were spit upon and it affected their future by being shunned by the people they protected, that they gave their all for, they risked their all for. So, you know, segueing into what Martha took from me, the stand-up, oh, Mary's going to put it up one more time, I think. But Saturday, April fifth, from ten to three PM, shortly following this celebration, March thirtieth, of Vietnam Veterans Day, will be an opportunity to come and support and honor military veterans and their families. Some will have passed, some will have still been active duty and some will have served and their families will show up to honor these veterans. So again, ten to three PM, Gregory Forum, easy to find, there'll be plenty of signs, Clackamas Community College, Molalla Avenue, I think everybody can find that with their app on their, their smartphone, I'm sure. Free event, no registration, free parking, a little bit of a walk concerning the parking at Clackamas Community College. And I will throw in also that Clackamas Community College is coming out with a ninety million dollar bond. Now, you know, this, one of my alma maters is Clackamas Community. And you say, "What do they do now?" What they react to is the marketplace. And Martha well knows this as, you know, our WICO representative, that they, they react to the market and they produce programs that will educate Clackamas County citizens to such an extent that they'll be ready for the job market. We need more of that readiness and certainly our industry say, "What a great partner Clackamas Community College is." Their, their key thrust will be towards technology and shouldn't they not be there? So I will be very supportive of Clackamas Community College's capital bond. I think you should look into it and see all that, that college will get, all its bend to the community, and my hope is that you too will support that. I have some other announcements, the BCC Town Hall meetings, April ninth is our next one, hosted at, hosted by Sandy Chamber of Commerce, Sandy Community Center, seven o'clock is the starting time, and we will start and end exactly on time. Three eight, three four eight Pioneer Boulevard, Sandy. Following one will be at, at Estacada, and you can see that there, I'll announce, I have plenty of times to announce this in the weeks coming forward. And of course, Wednesday, November twelfth, Town Hall at Happy Valley City Hall. The County Veterans Service Office, which has been talked about here many times, where are they going, where have they been, when is it going to happen? So here it is on the screen now. But they will be closed the week of March thirty-first to April third during their move, they will be moving to this building where we're setting in now. Beginning the seventh, they will open their doors at the new location called the Public Service Building, two oh five one Kane Road, suite two eight one, that's the second floor. The phone number remains the same, five oh three, six five oh, five six three one. It's an easy email address, it's veterans@clackamas.us. The last thing I guess want to say is that two Saturdays ago, my best friend was mowing the lawn. He's a guy from Wilsonville. He's a guy from Wilsonville who had moved to Milwaukee, and, but we'd always been friends, and we'd go over and play silly board games, and the guy's a mensa, so the board games did not go well for Johnny a lot of times. But fantastic man, smart guy, and he was mowing his lawn, he dropped dead. Now, his son put something very poignant, and something I've mentioned before to you, about how you can change people's lives with a touch, with a smile, with a compliment. So, his son put on his Facebooks something so profound. He said, "Whatever you're doing, drop it, and call up your parents and tell them you love them." Isn't that not simple enough? For those of us who have lost our parents, parents, by the way, this young gentleman had told his father, "That day, I love you." But that never seems to be enough, you see. So, take the time, whether it's your parents or not, with somebody that means something to you, just tell them, tell them that today. I think it really helps them, and it helps you. Cleanse your soul, let people know that they are special to you, that they have made a difference in your life, and that you appreciate them. So, ladies and gentlemen, there being no further business before the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners, this meeting is adjourned.